My swish.
Just sitting there.
That's about where I am.
Here, Max is coming.
He comes.
Oh, good. Oh, okay, that's fine.
Any extra pens?
I do.
I do. Thank you so much.
Yeah, she's a big car.
Thank you. Director Burns is late.
I'm sorry. I'm such a child.
Hello.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Can you somebody tell me when the light?
It's on.
Oh, there we go. Okay, welcome. Thank you all for being here today on this chilly day. We are here for a work session to talk about a number of different issues or topics that all relate to the health and strength of our community, of our students, of our schools. And I think what we need to start with is a general concept of what our budget projections are. And Director Hoheisel has worked on that with the Finance Committee, and I think you're going to have, share some information with us today, so I'll turn it over to you.
Absolutely, thank you so much. One thing, and it seemed to resonate maybe a little bit as we were talking about the budget process in different meetings, that I'd like to call attention to, and maybe it's more along the lines of how to frame it, because I know through the course of a year, we've heard that, you know, when are we going to have a budget conversation, or when are we going to talk about whatever it is, money related? And I think if, as you approach this meeting, if you can kind of think of it as like a three-year plan, I mean, that's how the numbers are presented. So even if it's something I don't, I think maybe we've been trying to approach, or the approach has been, just due to time, quite honestly, board turnover, we have new board members, that we should be planning out years, not necessarily trying to be reactive in the current year or the year that's coming up. So when we look at specifically fiscal year or school year 2021, there's a lot of that information that's kind of already on its way. We're already in the staffing process, we're already doing different things. But that does not mean that, number one, you can't change what's going on and implement as the year goes on. It also doesn't mean that you can't strategically plan to say, okay, this might not be something we're doing in 2021, but let's look at it for '21, '22, and beyond. So maybe, I'm going to ask, because honestly, as we enter into the levy cycle, that's going to be for a year from now. Everything we're starting to do is not necessarily for 2021 anymore, it's for '21, '22. So I think it would be very fruitful to maybe have the conversation, okay, we might not be able to do this today, but we're not saying no to it. How do we plan accordingly to either add, subtract, change, as we move forward? And so I think if we can approach it that way, that let's look at a three-year picture as opposed to just next year, it might help ease, it might allow for more conversation, and it might actually ease the frustration level a little bit, because that's honestly how a budget should roll. That's how getting to the Budget Committee work is processed. We do look at a three-year window. One is for next year, the 2021 cycle, and then we look at '21, '22, and '22, '23. The reason why we look at a three-year cycle is that we find anything beyond three years is really a reach. You're looking at two legislative sessions, which is an area that we don't control. You're looking at multiple contract settlements, if you will, like you're, you know, you're going through many processes many times, and the numbers just get skewed, and they either look like we're going to be way high or way low, and that's just kind of a false narrative. So we, so the committee has specifically honed in to look at what are our assumptions, or agreed-upon assumptions, as we work our way through the budgets. And I'm going to just sort of brush over this, I'm not necessarily going to go line by line, because I know our time is tight, and you want to talk about priorities and different things. You can see revenue, we look at enrollment, we look at what we think, you know, the state might be giving us, what they might be taking away. One component for us to consider as we move forward is we did assume that there would be a renewal in our operating referendum, but not an increase. So these numbers reflect that everything stays the same with that, things stay the same, status quo with Q Comp and like. Then as we move into expenditures, one thing as we look at the numbers, this does not assume any contract increases. So whatever the board has set as far as parameters, this, that isn't included in these numbers. Steps and lanes are, parameters are not. Health insurance, we have at 4% for the three years, dental insurance at 1, and then as we move forward, different, different assumptions that the committee looked at information. All of that said, as we, as I put all of this into a, our projection model, you then have three pages of graphs, which show you, you know, what are we looking at, what, how does that stagger out? Now, I would like to point out, we take the revised budget. So the committee did their work in November, the revised budget was approved by the board, was it December? I think it was the end of December. And so we start with the end of December, that those were our best numbers, and we move with these assumptions forward. You're provided three different graphs. The first one, assuming you're in the same order as I am, is a unassigned projected year-end fund balance. So you can see for 2020, we're looking at 9.476, which goes up to, then in, at the end of '21, 12.27. And you can see kind of, we, we sort of have like a couple million dollar increase moving forward every year.
Can, can we just ask a quick question?
Absolutely.
Thank you. So can you help me remember, last year, it feels like before we went into cutting, that maybe it was a different, we were looking at a different category, but it looked like it was going to tank by a lot, and this looks a lot better than that. Can you talk to, speak to that?
When, yes, I can. So when you have an unbalanced budget, when your expenditures are exceeding your revenue, you're going to keep going, dropping lower and lower, because you haven't equaled the point of being flush, they don't match. And so as soon as you made a two-plus-million-dollar reduction, you essentially said, okay, now we're at least balanced, possibly to the good. We can see now that we're to the good, if you will. And so as the state, or the assumption is the state continues to give us money, our revenues remain higher than our expenditures, which is why you see the growth. Again, absent contract settlements. If you, if you did not make the cuts, this line would be a linear line, because you think about it, it's what you're seeing as the trajectory is pretty much what you cut. It would be a linear line, but that's absent any contract settlements, which would then drop you back below again.
So is that where the tanking came from? Because it, it feels like that, and I have no idea where that chart is, but that it was like drastic.
Well, part of this was impacted by the crossroads of the income.
It was.
The special ed, I mean, so the special ed plus the cutting, you're saying, is what's getting us in such a better place than where we were.
Yes, yes. Because the special ed in and of itself, I mean, well, the first year, I mean, that was close to, it was like a 1.7 million dollar adjustment, and that continues to carry on, which we didn't have before, and that was new legislation. So the chart you saw didn't include that legislation, now your revised budget does, that's where we took the leap, and it continues to progress that way.
Thank you. I think additionally too, sorry, I'll let you go too, is when we did the, when we had to go through the budget cuts, that was a lot earlier than we had all of those state funding question marks answered. And then in addition, we had slightly higher enrollment last fall than what we expected, because I know we have had to hire a couple of teachers that were kind of last minute. And so that also obviously helps, helps that trajectory look a little steeper than it would otherwise. Yeah, go ahead, Mark.
And I think, so this trajectory also makes the same assumptions of, it doesn't have the contracts included in here. And it's possible that some of the projections that we were looking at in the past made, and this is a question, but made an assumption of, of some amount of, of contract adjustment?
If the contract was settled, yes. If it was an open contract, no.
So in other words, we know that we're going to have a new contract, we don't know what it's going to look like, but right now, we're, this is zero.
Correct.
Right? So it will have some impact.
Right.
Correct.
Well, unless it's, unless we settle at zero, but, but there is a question mark still.
Absolutely.
Yeah, depending on how that ends.
Absolutely.
Does this also reflect the fact that the special ed funding isn't a guarantee following years after?
Well, it's with the assumption of, the committee made the assumption that we would carry forward, assuming, I want to say, I want to say it's 500,000, special ed funding, it's the fourth bullet point from the bottom of the revenue, it says special ed funding is 12.1 million, then 12.6, and then 13.1. So we assumed an increase of $500,000 a year, as far as the, the special ed formula goes. Now, of course, expenses go up too, and that's reflected on the expenditure side, but that's, we did assume, and usually special ed, we're actually relatively conservative, the committee has conversation about, maybe we'll be aggressive in the student enrollment category, but maybe we won't be as aggressive in other funding areas, they do kind of have that checks and balance within its working group. But we are assuming $500,000 more every year in special ed revenue.
Okay. Everybody good?
So then the next two charts are truly, I mean, people see things differently, are truly just to provide different visuals for you, I wanted to give you a multi-year, like what did our fund balance look like? You can see the stagnation, where we dropped from the 7.8 to the 4, that was a contract settlement year, and we've been climbing our way back up, or the projection is to climb our way back up moving forward. And then the final chart is, is just a bar graph. Again, it's a visual, it's so you can see where we are, what that means, and it, the numbers don't change from the first one, it's just some people like to see it a different way.
Kristin, could you quickly just remind us again what unassigned, what the unassigned means, in terms of?
So, yes, absolutely. So when, and I'll speak specific to the general fund. When we have the general fund, there are different categories. There is the reserved, which the state says, we're going to give you money for basic skills, we're going to give you money for safe schools. You have to spend the money in that category, and if you do not spend the money in that category, it goes into a special holding account specific to that category. So that's a reserved account, that gets taken off the top, if you will, of the general fund balance. Then you have committed money and assigned money. The difference between committed and assigned is, one is board action, we do have some money sitting in technology still from board action years ago, that was saying, we're going to set this aside and use it for technology, for infrastructure, for different things, so that comes off the top. And assigned means the district itself, we know there's carry-forward balances, we know that, you know, there's money that is going to different departments for whatever reason, and that goes into assigned. And then everything that remains is the unassigned, which means that's where you have the flexibility to spend or not spend. That is what we, the board holds a 5% off of, and we use that 5% as off of the, the unassigned, that you want at least 5% of your expenditures on the unassigned.
Thank you for that.
And so there is your three-year snapshot. Within the materials, I also provided the, the approved budget adjustments that were done a year ago at this time for this school year, this fiscal year, because I know that's come up in various conversations of, you know, possibly looking at, do we want to entertain adding back anything in this list? So I wanted to make sure you had that available for you. There are, there's also what the board had discussed earlier this year, as it relates to the board's top priorities. Director, or Chair Stivlin, I'm assuming you will hit that, but there's, there's just various handouts to kind of now allow for the free flow of, of the budget conversation. Again, what I would like to point out is, right now, my department is working on creating a preliminary budget for 2021. Again, it's not, because we do that, doesn't mean all your work stops. You can carry forward, you can approve a preliminary budget, we can change for the revised. I mean, again, it's, it's demarcations in time, that's what it means to us. And so I, I know that when looking and saying, well, we don't want an approved preliminary budget, legally, we have to do it before July 1. If we're ready, you know, if we don't think any is, anything is significantly going to change for next year, then we do it again. But again, we can always catch up with the revised. It doesn't say you can't change things, it's just saying it's going to be reflected in the next document. Okay?
Yeah, thank you very much. Yes, go ahead.
Ask a quick question. On, on the budget assumptions, under revenue, status quo on Q Comp, what does status quo mean?
That means we will continue to collect aid, but we will not levy. Or there's no levy dollars reflected in the budget. I mean, you can, the board can choose to change that, it's just to build the model, that's what we assumed.
Okay.
And then, I'm sorry, one more question. The keep literary incentive aid at 434,000, what control do we have over that?
That, it, it's formula-driven from the state, and it's based off of, there's a growth component between third and fourth grade for English, and I don't remember the other piece. We did look at historically, what do we typically get in literacy incentive aid? And I want to say we were right around that, Mark, so there was the assumption that we don't see anything significantly changing, and so we're going to keep that dollar amount the same.
Yeah, can I ask another? I don't know if you have this in front of you, but we know the fund balance, what's this budget year, the difference between revenue and expenditures? Are we balanced this year? Or, we wouldn't be now because of special ed funding, right?
We are, at this point, we are sitting better with our revenues, our revenues are higher than our expenditures, so yes, you are balanced.
But our 20, our fiscal year '21 budget that we've approved already, have we?
No.
Is that?
That's what's coming.
Okay, that's coming. And, and you'll bring that to us balanced? Correct? Or depending on what we do?
Depending on what you do. Right, what I would say right now, what is coming out of my office at this point, it's balanced because it's, and nothing's changed in my world, right? So it's going to look the, kind of the way, I mean, there might be some variation between what's real and what we assumed as projections back when, in November. But for the most part, this is what you're looking at. Now it's either back to, do we have contract settlements, which could alter it, or we approve the preliminary and let the, you know, that roll forward, or changes you make. But again, I, I think people, I, I just feel like there's, you know, oh, there's a, there's a document, and therefore, yes, we live by the document, we can't spend differently than the document, but guess what? We can create another document. You can make changes, you can do things, and we adjust, and the board approves, and we roll forward.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Can you, Kristin, refresh my memory on the, so the, we've got the staffing, the custodial staff cuts, and operations and facilities by 100K, cleaning, maintenance grounds, and this will come back probably later by me, but was, can you go back to what that cut was again? Was that the one that was every other day at the high school and middle schools? Is that included in that 100K?
It, it is. And what the intent was, or the conversation at that time was, I was not to cut anybody, but should we get a position through attrition, i.e. someone retires, someone quits, we just don't replace that position? We were basing that number off of, and it's low in that capacity, we're assuming like we won't go greater than a 4.0 FTE. I can't tell you exactly what has gone, but I can say we're probably, at least at the high school, probably down 3FTE at this point. But yes, that's what it's reflective of.
I had a, just, I had a long conversation with the head custodian engineer at the high school, Mike Miller, and I, it's, it's bothered me pretty much since the day after we made the cuts, maybe the very day. And this has been a dramat, it's been a dramatic, it's been tough on the, on the staff, from the way it was explained to me at the high school, and I feel very strongly about having a conversation about adding that back into the budget. I think that was, that was really tough. And so honestly, both of them, is of high interest to me, and just something I learned, and probably not applicable per se for this conversation, but something to keep in our minds.
The custo- About too, because in my, was, me, for me personally, growing up, was often one of my favorite people in the building, because they were so friendly, and they seriously knew every child's name in my school. And I think that happens in our district as well. And I think, you know, you could almost call it an extension of our mental health services, because that's a, that's a caring person who's caring for our space and our building, and they're around our kids all day, and some of these custodians are truly remarkable individuals, and I, I agree with you 100%. Like, we, we want to make sure that they can do their job as, as well as they can possibly do it, so we're not overstressing them, and, you know.
Exactly, thank you. And especially when they're being hired away, and I think licensure is another component to it, you know, boiler, like, I mean, I had got quite an education from Mr. Miller, I really appreciate it.
So I have a follow-up question then. So we, we said, you know, according to the budget cuts, that if we did this, if we made this decision to cut in the way that you described, that it would save us, you know, $100,000. But in reality, if we, we set up to for, you know, I'm guessing it's not exactly $100,000, right?
Right.
So two points to the question is, what would it actually cost to go back in and address some of those issues that you just raised? And, and, and then second point is, when is the best time for us to actually have that conversation and put it back in, in terms of your timeline of the development of the budget, even for next year? If that's something we wanted to consider?
If, if that's something you want to consider, again, anything is better sooner than later, because the farther along we get in the spring, it just won't get added back into the budget again. Not that you can't add it, you can, it's just that's the case. The reason why the, like, 4FTE doesn't equate to $100,000, because obviously, these individuals aren't making $25,000, is because you, they're not going, it wasn't a pure cut. It wasn't like, you're done July 1, and therefore, we get your whole year's salary. There's kind of a stagnation where you say, someone might be leaving in April, we might get two months' worth. And so just so you understand that that's not equivalent to like a pure cut, because you have to assume you're going to wait. If you are to add back, we're going to assume, assuming we can, that there are people to hire. That's going to be, you know, much quicker, much more rich probably than $100,000, because you're going to put them in place, or the goal would be to put them in place at the start in July, right?
Right. So we were cutting sort of partial positions, but when we put them back in, we'd be putting back in a full position or more, right?
Well, and it might, it might be, you might have different, you might have like a .3, or you might have different things to kind of fill different jobs. I'm just saying, the reason why you might have a dollar difference is because we were kind of waiting for different things to happen, as opposed to one felt implementation.
So, yeah, so I appreciate this. I would guess that all, each of us board members has something else they would like to talk about in relation to the budget.
I guess I would like to respond to what you just said, and I would like to caution about putting anything back in right away. I mean, we have programming that we want to get moving with the students, and, and if you eat it up in staffing, then that limits the abilities with pathways and any other things. So I think the conversation is a lot bigger than just this piece, so.
Yes, I would agree. I would agree, and that's a good segue, because I know when we approved the literacy program, one of the things that we were talking about potentially adding in at that time was an interventionist in literacy at both middle schools. So that would be one FTE at the Stillwater Middle, and one FTE at Oakland. In my conversations with building people, staff, and administrators, that that's something that would be really, really beneficial to our students, and that's direct student contact, which when we were going through these budget cuts, that was something we said was like really important, that we don't want to cut that close to kids. Well, this is actually, this wasn't in the budget before, so we, it wasn't there to cut, but now, is it something we want to consider putting, putting in, because it would be of benefit to our kids? I don't know.
Do we have a systematic way to look at, because, you know, I think we can each, you know, like, I want to look at the schedule at the high school, and I know, you know, other people have different things. So how can we get to a point where we know?
I'm really glad you said that, because I think that's, that is, like, we're not going to start talking about all of this today. I think my vision at least, and, and I would love to hear from other people, is, you know, this is sort of the initial conversation, we have sort of the big-picture scenario, we have a budget for 2021 that needs to be approved by June 30th. So ostensibly, if there is anything we want to look at for this coming year, it's between now and June 30th. That's when we need to have those conversations. So if it's two more conversations to, to, to touch base on some things, if there are things that we want to see looked at, additional cuts, or things we want to add back in, whatever it is, I think now is the time to start that conversation. I'd be, I really want to hear from other people, maybe Superintendent Pontrell, if you have any thoughts on it?
No, now is the time, you're exactly, and we've had lots of conversations about budget development, you have a little bit of room, and so talking about your priorities and developing your budget around that is a positive, good, healthy way to look at it. One of the things, just a little bit of caution, is we have that June 30th, but we also have to think a little bit about our staffing timelines, because if staff are going to be moving and shifting, you know that that staffing process is underway. A lot easier to do when we're adding than if there's something that you think you would want to cut as far as programs or stuff.
Right.
I, I apologize, because I know that this is not why I'm here today, but I can't help but interject, and just to piggyback onto that thought, I heard the mention of interventionists. And to, to piggyback again on what Superintendent Pontrelli just spoke about, last week, we literally had kind of our day-long powwow with HR to go over staffing and, and looking at what does the, the formula translate to for each of us at secondary schools. And one of the issues that I bring up annually, and brought up again this year, is the concept of interventionists. I know that there had been conversation about interventionists, both at elementary and then specifically with regard to both middle schools. Just as a reminder, we've got twice as many kids as both of those schools, and twice as many needs, and our need for interventionists at the high school is real also, and we don't have a built-in mechanism to be able to do that. And so consequently, every attempt that we make at intervention, while we have some comprehensive things, we, we are literally, I am figuring out ways to pull that out of a general staffing model. So whatever response to intervention we have, that's a coordinated effort right now at the high school, is coming at the expense of someone's biology class, or an elective class, a business class, or something like that, because the, the numbers that we get for staffing translate to an overall class average and just a, a basic student population. If I'm going to be able to do something to address reading needs for kids, or if I'm going to be able to do something for, for students who are lower in math, I have to figure out some creative way to do that at the expense of some other section somewhere, which obviously puts a strain throughout the, the whole entire system. And so as you, as you do talk about that, and, and begin to prioritize about that, i.e. I would just piggyback and say that we literally just had that conversation, and we are just now trying to, we're going out to our staff scheduled on Monday to start talking with them about what we see in terms of sections, and how that translates to, to beginning to build a schedule. We are in knee-deep in the, in the throes of it right now.
Can, can you just clarify really, so are you saying that for intervention for, say, a student, they're being pulled from like a biology class to get that, or are you talking about how it's being?
No, what I'm saying is that, that's going to translate to, if I'm going to have a staff member who is available to assess a student, to run a section of some kind of reading intervention, you know, if we're gonna, if we're gonna sit down and say, let's say that we assess 20 students, we find 20 students who are on kind of a cut score for potential need for intervention, we want to assess those students to find out whether or not they need it, and if they qualify for something, we want to, we need to have something for them to go to, right? So because I don't have separate staffing for an interventionist, when we say, okay, teacher A, you're going to teach this section of reading intervention, the only way that I'm going to be able to create that section of intervention is to pull a section somewhere out of the, the rest of the schedule. So if I, if by the numbers, we might qualify for, let's say, based on the number of kids that sent in for biology, let's say that that translates to roughly 15 sections of biology, averaging 32 to 33 students per section, what I might have to do is say, you know what, we maybe are looking at having to run biology at 33 or 34 students a section, because I'm going to bump that class average up, because I'm going to take one of those sections out to be able to run a section of intervention over here. And so that's why I say the, the whole thing, building a master schedule is a jigsaw puzzle where all of those pieces try to fit together, but when the, the piece is only this big, we also then have to prioritize internally as a school and say, all right, where are we going to, to have to place resources to, to do really what our mission is and what our priorities are?
Thank you.
Do you know offhand, and it probably, you may not, what would be a reasonable number, a modest number, but an effective number of interventionists that the high school would need? I mean, I guess I don't know exactly what the numbers are needed in the different schools.
I have tasked a, a group of people earlier this year to develop a plan for reading, and I said, if you had 1.0 in reading, give me a plan and show me what that would look like, and sat down and looked at it, to which I was very satisfied with the plan, I thought it, it looked very good. I think we could probably, I would ask for, I mean, if the, the world is, money's no object, right? And the world is my oyster, I would ask for 1.0 in reading and 1.0 in math right off the top. We, the, the model that we are currently using in math, we could probably make work with less than 1.0, but to me, for a school our size, you know, and especially given the, the emphasis that are on test scores, and that happens to be two areas where, where testing takes place, I would absolutely say 1.0 in reading, 1.0 in math.
Could we get those, I mean, is there a way that we could get those from, just for future conversations, so we are aware of what the needs are? And not just your building, I'm talking all the buildings, would that come from you, or?
So we can, we can look at and show you currently what our kids, so what Rob is referring to with the cut scores, we can look at the number of students at each of the buildings and determine what that is overall. Because we have all the fast bridge and the different pieces for reading in place already, Because we have all the fast bridge and the different pieces for reading in place already, the teachers already have that information. So I'd just be reaching out to principals to look at what those are. I would love to know that information, just for future conversations if we're moving that way.
Yeah.
Right, that I would agree with that. You know, I think we're trying to figure out a package of what, you know, between board priority, administration priority, what we're hearing from our schools and figuring out what's the best way we can.
And I I think it's important, I think you you mentioned it, Kristin, at the outset, that, you know, some of the conversations that we're about to have even today are really long-term conversations. They're they're not going to happen for next year, you know, or maybe even after the year after that. It may take longer than that. But we can begin now to say, these are things we think would be really great to pursue and let's try to craft a path to get there. This one seems like it's becoming more and more. I see lots of people in the room nodding vigorously. Yes, we need this. And I really do wonder if we shouldn't consider putting that, like, let's let's pursue this as a possibility for the budget for next year. Let's look at that. Let's let's add, you know, let's actually seriously take a look at what what kind of numbers we could have if we if we wanted to add those things in the budget for next year. But I just want to be able to say, what would that look like? And then as a board, we can say, yeah, we're willing to take take that leap. I don't know what what other people think, yes.
Do we have, I know this is not anybody, any anything anybody can answer right away, but do we have any idea when we will know what contract negotiations look like so we actually know how much room we have?
Well, you've set your parameters and so are we will go forward and negotiate the contracts within those parameters. So you I don't think that will change from what you were anticipating when you set those, unless at some point you were to change your parameters, which we've had conversations, so I don't anticipate.
So at some point, we would we could potentially be, we could potentially, well, okay.
What I would suggest is you know the numbers.
Yeah. But right, so but we need to know what that looks like.
Right, but what I'm saying is you you do have the numbers from what you set as parameters.
Right. We just have to go back and review that.
You just have to go back and review and take it from the numbers you're looking at today.
Got it, got it.
I would just like to say, I I think we should strongly consider looking at what the numbers is, numbers are, you know, the, you know, one FTE reading and one of each at the high school level and and hopes and dreams from from the middle school staff with regards to interventionists and just see what it looks like and maybe put that as a a top priority and see how we can possibly make that fit.
Okay.
Again, I don't know what the structure is of this, but, you know, I will never let go of the custodial thing. But I also want to ask about the, you know, the the dramatic cuts in PD. I guess I just, for me, I before I can go too forward, I want to see how the cuts have impacted staff and the students. And I, again, I don't know what process we're taking here, but I want to see how the how these cuts impacted staff and students. And before we can say, you know, what what are we looking for that we want, I just I can't, I have a hard time doing that with the cuts that that we've made and not have any closure on on that as well.
So one, yes.
I completely agree with you, Jen, and I was I was wondering that same thing. When we approved the literacy curriculum, we did add back some PD. Is that reflected in this number or no?
No.
Okay.
Yes, I was just going to share, as we've gone through the staffing process, we've had several conversations now about different places where there were cuts made or where principals have expressed a sincere need for some staffing. For example, our bar program that Rob's presented on, we have a halftime built in. But as you know, that program's expanding and so the bar would be another area. I had a conversation with an elementary principal about, you know, this isn't working very well with our support staff at the building level. So I think we could work together to put some, you know, as we've gone through that, what are the things that have risen that have become clear with the budget cuts that's working or not, or other additional areas where we may need?
I think that would be awesome.
Yeah, which I would really appreciate because I think, you know, what I shared with Denise the other day, it'd be really great to be able to do some things that we need to add back, some things that are really board priorities and that we can get excited about. And I think there are some on here that really match what administration wants to do, but so that it's not only we're going to add all this back and that's all we can do. Because I think we really want to get behind some of these other initiatives that are happening.
So we have two more work sessions scheduled right now, one from for before each of our March meetings. And just for future, for people to know, they are going to be scheduled, I think, at City Hall, so we don't have to make this mad dash over there after we're finished. But at least one of those could be, perhaps the second one would be a time that would give us enough time to kind of work through some of these numbers and ideas. And and if you came up with a proposed list of either additional things we could consider cutting or things we want to add back in or just further adjustments that you would recommend, and then the rest of us, and I would say even community members, I mean, if anybody has thoughts or ideas about what they think we should do do differently, I mean, please, please let us know, you know? But definitely board members, if you have things that you want us to look at again, maybe we can kind of put that together and have a more rich conversation, like March 19. Would that work? Or at least sometime this spring?
You can.
Okay.
So one of the things we talked about is when you look at your priorities, and I know all of this, things are important, right? But when we talked about this, Sarah and I, earlier, we looked at your priorities of the first of the first few of them, K, G, and C, all resonate and kind of are connected with that notion of pathways. And so today, we asked Rob to come back and share with you a little bit more. We worked on a chart to be able to lay things out for you with kind of what are the phases so you can see where we are, where we need to go, what do we need to do with staffing and that kind of thing. And so if we can, I think it might be helpful to have Rob share since we have him here tonight. You're welcome to come to any meeting, but as long as you're here tonight.
Sure.
Would that be all right?
Yeah, that would be great. Mm-hmm.
Sure. Thank you for the opportunity to be here, and I appreciated just the interest. And I know that maybe you were looking for a little bit more clarification just on a sense of direction with regard to the pathways program. I appreciate the opportunity to come talk because I I know that's a sign that that's still on your radar screen and important, so I appreciate that. If you look at the the chart, the chart is basically broken down into five columns, if you will, that are intended to be chronological. So over on the.
Can you hang on just a second?
On the bottom.
That's just.
Got it.
Everybody have it? Okay. So the the columns are intended to kind of go chronologically. So if you look at the far left, the far left talks about 2018, 19. So that was this past school year and and some of the work that had gone on there. And you're probably familiar with that because we've talked through that several different times, just some of the empathy work, the surveying and and the internal recognition of who we are and what we needed to do. 2019, 2020, that's the our current school year. And I think I've probably talked about this in in these terms with this group. If not, the terms that I use for a lot of groups that I talk with, I've been meeting with Rotary groups, I met with parent groups, obviously, at Pony Possibilities. And kind of the way that I've talked with them about the pathways concept is, is that imagine work being done right now almost in two areas, if you will. One of those areas really centers around the community partnership piece and solidifying the the community partnerships and making sure that our kids have opportunities outside of a traditional classroom. And the other area really is the curricular side of things and and making sure that each program of study that we're offering kids is robust, has all kinds of opportunities, and really flows from an introductory level down to a a more advanced level as we had intended and talked about. If you look again at the second column, the first two items that are listed there, develop pathways and possibilities program, marketing materials, and then the second one overhaul registration materials, create the course registration academic planning guide, those pieces have kind of been done to this point. So that got us to the registration phase, that kind of got us to Pony Possibilities, which was the end of January. And again, at the risk of patting a lot of people on the back, I just I can't tell you how impressive Pony Possibilities was this time of this year with being able to wrap the the pathways concept in with it. The level of excitement with parents, the level of excitement with our staff, best that I've ever seen since I've been here and the the six years that I've been here. It was fantastic. So those are pieces that are done to this point. And then the remaining pieces, again, in my mind, I separate them out into two areas. The first two pieces there, the partner with businesses and the develop relationships, again, that's kind of more the community partnership angle. That's what Bob Manning is working on as the as the coordinator right now. So Bob is working every day to build up a database of interested community partners that currently exist who have an interest in being able to to work with our kids and developing that end. And then the other, the last three pieces down there, the aligning programs of study, beginning curricular alignment, and identify opportunities for early college options, that's a piece that's scheduled really to start up in earnest fourth quarter. We've just hired kind of a part-time coordinator to deal with the the curriculum side of things. That'll be Rachel Stile, who again has been pretty instrumental in the development of the the whole entire program and concept to this point. But those pieces, if you're looking for more specifics, just a couple of examples of what that really might look like are on the curricular side of things. I think the intention is really to start with a couple of very specific programs of study. Right now, computer science, for example, is one that stands out. We have a pretty clearly articulated scope and sequence in that computer science piece, but that's an easy one to tack on a couple of other things. So to making sure that we've got an early college credit opportunity. Right now, that exists as AP, but are there other ways to to do that? That's part of what Rachel will be coordinating. Give you one other example in world language right now, just this past year, we worked with Curriculum Advisory Council to pass a CIS French class. CIS again is college in the schools. Similar to AP, it's an advanced, rigorous course of study, right? Different from AP, however, and similar to AP in that it's an early college credit opportunity for students. Different from AP, from the standpoint that in AP, a student has to go all the way through the course, sit down for an end-of-course exam, put all your eggs into the the basket of this exam, hope you pass the exam, and then hope that the secondary or post-secondary institution that you want to go to accepts this. And right now, those institutions are starting to change some of their parameters. It used to be a three automatically got you this, and now some are saying we need a four. And so the the target is kind of changing there. With college in the schools, the college in the schools, it's already a college course. It's taught at the high school. If a student's able to sit all the way through that course and successfully complete the course, they don't have to have a high-risk, high-stakes exam at the end to get college credit. And because that college credit is University of Minnesota, it's automatically, not automatically, but much more likely to be transferred to wherever that student wants to go. It's a more convenient route for kids. It's a better route for students. It's difficult, however, to do that because there's some other stipulations that we have to meet with college in the schools, like, for example, teachers have to have a master's in that area. And if you have a veteran staff like we kind of do, a number of teachers already have their masters, it's not cost-effective for them to go back and get that. That's the kind of piece that Rachel is working through on the curricular side of things is to make sure that we've got dual credit opportunities for kids. If there are teachers that are in a position to be able to go back to get that master so that we could offer that, what would that look like? And again, we actually just did that in French, so we're shifting away from AP towards CIS. I think it was a great change. I wholeheartedly endorsed it up at the at the CAC meeting. And we're actually talking right now, we have some Spanish teachers that are interested in and have done a lot of homework to investigate a similar kind of move in Spanish. But it's going to take a lot of work with them in finding partnering post-secondary institutions, what are their requirements going to be, what can we do as a district to help our teachers through those? Those are the the kinds of curricular side of things that that Rachel will be working on in addition to to ramping up and beefing up each of the programs of study. So those are some specific examples kind of of what that looks like. And then as we move into 2020, 2021, so next school year and the the following school year, it will be continuing to build on that. Again, with the community partnerships piece, one example of something that we that we use right now is Genesis Works. I don't know if you've ever heard of that or are familiar with that, but it's a specific program that helps students, it lines them up essentially with internships. It tends to target underrepresented populations to make sure that they have access to these to these jobs, but it hooks them up with a paid internship where students go and they actually work through employment in a large-scale entity and are doing their work. They the students, however, go through a pretty intensive summer course to develop job skills and understand what it's like to work in a professional environment and all of those kinds of things before they wind up getting hooked up with this internship. It's a great opportunity for kids. It's very underutilized right now in Stillwater. And I would say that two years ago, I think we had maybe two kids go through that program. Last year, I think we had one kid. Now, as a result of some of the pathways work, we've used a much more targeted approach to bring Genesis Works in, make sure that that students understand these opportunities. Right now, we have seven kids that are interested and that number is even creeping up because there are several more that are kind of in the queue. Part of what I could potentially see as this goes on and and through the the Phase 1 and Phase 2 stages is that, you know, in a dream world, eventually we get to a spot where Genesis Works is just handled internally in Stillwater. And that's that's our model. That's not something that we have to outsource or rely on an an outside entity to be able to do because we have a an internal system that's been built up and allows us to to be able to do that. And those are the pieces that that Bob is working on. The the piece that's up at the top is also important for me to highlight, though, and that is that it is important for us to identify a sustainable funding source for those two coordinator positions. This work, again, as as you know, you heard my my pitch a couple of months ago, this work does not happen without people who are specifically targeted to do this as a job. And right now, what's kind of on our mind or our plan would be that we need approximately 1.4 FTEs worth of people to make this work. The community partnerships, we view kind of as a full-time 1.0 FTE spot. The curricular side of things can be done at less than that. And so especially as time goes on and and those programs of study do get built up a little bit, again, I could see that as being less, and that's where the the 0.4 piece comes in. But right now, what we have done is we have solicited outside funding sources. Community Ed has been awesome enough to to work with us on the the piece that you had approved as far as expenditure that I pitched back in January to get the the 1.0 for the remainder of this school year. We've gone to outside sources like the partnership plan to try to to handle the curricular side of things and to to get the support that we need to be able to handle the curricular side. And again, that piece will actually not kick in, that's not a full-time FTE, and it won't kick in until the start of fourth quarter. But what we need is is we have enough right now to get us through the end of this summer, but that's not a sustainable piece, and somehow we need to find ways to make it sustainable. Our plan would be for this next year, I think that there are potentially other sources, again, that we could continue to pursue so that it doesn't become a staffing piece. But ultimately, that is something where we hope that by the time we hit Phase 2 in 2021 and 2022, when the board is potentially ready to go out to the community as and ask for a referendum and 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 put a levy out, that is something that we hope continues to stay a priority, that the the pathways program as a concept continues to stay a priority, and that that's something where the community has already seen some return on investment on so that those positions can be wrapped into what we would potentially ask the the community for. Because there has to be a sustainable way of funding that position going forward, and it can't continue to be something where we're continually trying to find some partnership from Anderson or some partnership from the the partnership plan or something to to fund.
Can I just ask? So the the one, I I'm just guessing, that 1.4 is basically the one full-time that's technically Bob Manning and then the.
Correct.
0.4 is Rachel Stile.
Correct.
And you said the funding we have right now for Rachel would start fourth quarter.
Correct.
So essentially going through the summer.
Correct.
Kind of thing. So if we were to, let's just say we put it in the budget for next year, what would that look like? Because is is that going to be a summer job? Is that going to be addition above and beyond for Rachel? I mean, I understand Bob Manning is full-time on this.
Right.
But Rachel's got already got a full-time job as a teacher.
Right.
So will this be above and beyond that? Or what is the vision?
It's a good question. I I don't quite know how to answer that because it's a year out, but what I would I would be inclined to say Bob's position for sure is going to entail summer work. I absolutely probably would envision Rachel's doing summer work too because the the bottom line is Rachel can't do that work in isolation. She has to work with the teachers that are going to be involved in that curricular area. And so as the the teacher sits down to either revise the course or plan a new course to make sure that, you know, if there's a gap in the program of study that we have to to build, all of that tends to primarily take place over the course of the summer. And so that summer writing piece, typically that's paid for either out of professional development or voucher paid as teachers come in, depending on the number of hours that they put in. And so sometimes there's other creative ways around that where it doesn't have to be a part of the salary, but yes, both of those positions will entail summer work.
Okay, great, thank you.
And is that what partnership plan is covering right now?
Correct.
Her fourth quarter.
Correct, yeah. And the number that the partnership plan came up with and what we had presented to the partnership plan really was intended to get through fourth quarter and the summer. And so really, that summer piece is both for Bob and Rachel with the partnership plan because the community Ed piece will get Bob essentially through the end of this school year. And again, knowing that we were going to need both of them throughout the course of the summer to be able to continue that, that's when we hit up the partnership plan to say this is the comprehensive piece that's going to be several weeks over the course of the summer.
Chair, I am so excited about Pathways, and I just want to, Bob is the person for this job. He's so excited about it. He's, I've had multiple email exchanges with him over time, and I just want a gentle ask that we get kind of continual or whenever you see fit, updates here and there on how it's going. And only because I think, thinking of myself as a taxpayer, and we are, we do have a levy, and our taxpayers are watching, and they want to know what they're being asked to pay for. And I do believe the community is very excited about this. So the more they know, the more they're going to say, oh, this is what I'm funding, and it's a wonderful gift for the district, so.
He's been making the rounds, for sure.
Yeah, he has, yeah.
He's busier on the speaking circuit right now than I am.
He's awesome.
Thanks, great. And that is something that Chair Stivlin, we had a conversation in our Board Chair Superintendent meeting this week about doing like a monthly update during a school board meeting so the community and the board can have a good working and knowledge of the progress he's making. He's moving.
Yeah, it's really exciting.
And I don't know if there needs to be clarity at all around the partnership donation for the program, but they didn't, they don't designate for a staff member, they just gift you the
Correct.
money, so then you do
We came in with a budget and an outline of what all of the money would be used to cover. So yeah, we give them a detailed list of all of the things, this is what would get done, this is what would get done, all of those kinds of pieces.
And I just have to say, I mean, I really appreciate their support. Obviously, they really, they were pinch hitting for us right now. They were helping us out in a moment when, you know, we, it would have been really hard for us to figure it out. But going forward, I mean, my gosh, they already do so much for us. If we can find our way to support this through our budget, I think we could save that much money in their budget for other things that are also really awesome, so.
Yeah, and I absolutely do that when we talk about just sustainable models, right? I mean, this is a long-term piece that we want to see in place for our kids for a long time. This can't go anywhere, shouldn't go anywhere. It has to somehow, some way be incorporated into the district's picture for how we fund it because, yeah, we can't continue to go to outside sources. And all of us, I think, have taken a little bit of a leap of faith. But when you're doing something big and something that should be great, you know, it's that entrepreneurial spirit, you have to take a leap of faith a little bit here and there. And so I've encouraged a couple of our staff members to do that, think about it. They've been willing to go on a great journey so far. And, you know, we sort of have a plan, but there comes a point in time where that plan is going to be involving this group to say, you're going to see the return on investment, I'm absolutely confident of it. Can we figure out a way to make sure that we don't have to look outside the parameters of this group to continue to do it?
Right, right.
Sorry, so just to clarify, for next school year, we need to find that money in the general?
We are working on that right now, so.
I think you need to plan on that. We need the plan, and then if we get support from some of the other places, we'll be very happy.
Yes.
Thank you.
I agree, thank you for saying that because I do, I personally feel like this needs to go on that list when we start looking at, good.
You can track.
Already on there.
For conversation.
Okay, for conversation. Did you want to continue on for?
You know, you can probably read through the rest of it. The only other piece maybe that's worth talking about a little bit because I know that there have been some questions from the board. But the, we've talked before during one of our other sessions about the current schedule that's in place at the high school and the idea that to really truly support the Pathways concept, there are other models that would probably do a better job of that. And so I know that I had put together with Dr. McDowell kind of a summary page for you, if you will, that outlines several different options and what the implications are that are associated with that because obviously different models have different costing pieces that go along with them. Again, if you have any questions on those pieces, the one piece that I would kind of caution, I appreciate Shelley's question about as far as the funding, is this something that we should go for for next year? And that part's a simple question, yes. While we also would like to see a different schedule model to potentially support something like Pathways, I would like to be very clear that that's not something that is as simple as just saying, yes, we're going to look at that this year. So even if all of a sudden millions of dollars came out of the sky and money was no object, the amount of planning and the amount of implications with regard to staffing, the implications with regard to curriculum, all of those kinds of things are not pieces that can happen overnight. That's a much longer-term piece, which is why, again, our suggestion would be in November of '21, if that's the timeline at which the board is ready to go to the community for a levy, in addition to, you know, whatever other pieces, the schedule is something that could be wrapped up in that too, where again, we could articulate to the community, if you're willing to support the levy, this is what it would look like, this is what it would do for our students, and that would give our staff opportunity to a year's worth of study to begin to understand what that might mean for, what's it even like to teach on a four-period day, or if we were to go to a seven-period day or things like that? Those are things that have implication all the way through curriculum where suddenly pacing becomes different. If pacing is different, automatically our assessments may be different. All of those kinds of things are really wrapped up. So that's a very, very complex picture, takes a long time to sort through, but it's worth discussion to at least know that you're aware that there's a plan for that or at least a recommendation in terms of where that would fall.
And I was just going to ask, I know that if we're going to talk hopes and dreams, is there a particular schedule that you know right now would work better with Pathways?
I wanted to ask you that, too.
Or do you not know that yet?
Well, here's the thing, I have an opinion on that, yes, absolutely. But I would preface that by saying before I even share that out, that's just, that's one person's opinion, right? Exactly, yeah, I put it, Rob Bach said this. That's not, having had much conversation yet with my staff, and certainly that's something that as a school, we would need to engage in to do a much more organic process. With that said, there are a couple of pieces on there maybe that I would not necessarily recommend, and some of those are actually even highlighted on that page for you. A seven-period day, while if you do the math, it offers more choice for kids. A seven-period day, suddenly a seven-period day, suddenly kids now have seven classes. And if we're talking stress and mental health and things like that, that's a very real consideration to take in. So yes, a kid that's involved in music and world language now has an opportunity to take something else that they might want to take, but at what expense is that coming? Is that just adding to the clutter of their day, adding to the amount of homework that they have at night? Those are, those are very, very real questions to process through. With that said, the schedule that makes, if you're again just asking me, one person, the four-by-four schedule is something that gives 16 courses over the course of a year. You can have more flexibility if you get creative with how you design a schedule, if you're offering an every-other-day kind of thing where some of those courses can continue to go all year long. We can offer some skinnies if there are certain classes that lend themselves to that where instead of having a 90-minute block, maybe you've got two shorter 45-minute blocks. So there's some creative things that you can do with that. But again, that's a, that's a long ways off, and it's a lot of conversation with staff to see whether that's something that would work and really support the model. But off the top of my head, that's kind of, it's not the most expensive piece that's on there, but it's, it's one that would support it. It's one that would support the Pathways model.
And can you just explain too, when you say like four-by-four on this chart, you mean four class periods in a day?
Correct.
And four quarters.
And four grading periods, essentially.
Four quarters instead of two semesters.
Right, over the course of four quarters. So essentially what happens is if you imagine a year-long course, a year-long course would now be done over the course of two quarters or a semester. And so a semester-long course would then be condensed essentially into one quarter. So students would have four courses during first quarter, four courses during second quarter. So there's 16 marks every year on a transcript rather than the six-by-two, which we're on right now, six periods a day times two grading periods where they have 12 courses on a transcript.
And in the notes on the bottom here, it says the schedule would allow for AB schedule where classes would meet every other day. Would that be more like if you did like four-by-four-by-two or something like where you'd have four on an A day, four on a B day?
Correct.
And a two semester?
Correct. Four on an A day, four on a B day. And so, you know, if you, if you imagine it this way, let's take math as an example. On a block schedule, another term for a four-by-four, on a block schedule, a year-long course is done in a semester. So if I sign up for my math class, let's say that I sign up for Algebra II, okay? Right now, Algebra II is all year long. If suddenly tomorrow, the schedule shifted to a four-by-four, my Algebra II class might only be first semester. Technically, students would have the option, they could actually sign up for another math class. I could maybe do Algebra II and Algebra III in the same year, but we know that there are X number of students who are not going to be interested in doing that. In which case, if their math ends in January, and suddenly now they're sitting for an MCA exam in April, they've gone four months without having had any math, and that's not a real great recipe for that. If there's a way creatively to do an A day, B day, something like that, then again, they're, you know, they alternate some of those classes, but their math class then progresses all the way throughout the course of the year. So they still have the benefits of a four-by-four schedule, but they might also have the benefits of, you know, being closer to a test time or things like that. Again, that's just one example of something where, again, that requires a lot of conversation and a lot of communication to try to figure out, is that really a good model? And can we teach on that kind of thing? And are kids actually going to be interested in that? Is that truly supporting kids? But that's one example of how if the cost-benefit analysis bears out, it gives you a little bit more flexibility to do things like that.
Yep. And you have on your chart, Rob, you've got for Phase One, Phase Two, for next school year, you've identified consider possible secondary schedule options as part of the 2021 levy request.
Correct.
Do you have kind of an idea, so I take it from this, that what you would have planned is that sometime next school year, after you've had an opportunity to have some of these discussions with the educators in the building, that you would come to us as a board and say, this is kind of what we're thinking might look like, might work, whether it be four-by-four, or you know what, we feel that the six-by-two is still going to be the way to go, whatever it is, but that you're going to come to us sometime next year with that so that we can start to build it into our plan for the levy?
I think that's fair. I mean, I think the way the process would play itself out is if the, if the board indicated that, yes, this seems reasonable in terms of a timeline, and yes, we would be, we would be prepared to have some kind of a question to the community in November of '21, and you would like schedule options to be a part of that, then that would trigger whatever that process would look like. We would then have to figure out, okay, what is a, what is a real process going to look like on our end to start engaging in conversations about the best ways to support that? And then to the extent that you wanted recommendations, yes, those are pieces that we would start engaging our staff in conversations on to figure out what's the best way.
Because, and this is a follow-up, I mean, I think as part of this, we at least would like to have that consideration of a schedule change, what it costs, what the implications are, well enough in advance so that we could consider it for the levy.
Well, and like I said, we would need that time too because, again, that's, those are in-depth conversations that involve an awful lot of people to try to make sure that people feel good about it and engage them in the process. And so we would need time on our end too. So if that is something that, you know, becomes an area of focus or an area of vision for us throughout the course of the next year, it's certainly a conversation that we can start figuring out how to engage staff and community for that matter into.
So thank you for that. And I want to just ask, well, maybe just state, I don't know, but I would really like us, when you talk about, you know, getting these coordinators in place before you really know how it's going to work, if it's at all feasible, I think it'd be great for us to consider implementing a schedule for '21, '22 so that we can go into the bond saying, look, what we've been able to do for kids, we want to sustain this project because it's getting kids, it's getting an extra year of kids, right, who are able to take part in that and might help us pass the levy if we can say, look what, look what we can do for kids. So maybe that feels too tight because you'd have to have it kind of in place by next January registration, right? So that's
Yes.
11 months from now and maybe two. But just to state for the record that I would love for us to be able to get that.
I concur. Thank you for saying that, I appreciate that. The class schedule thing is something we have had for quite a few years, we've had actually students coming up at open forum and asking for us to please change the schedule because the way we have it right now is very stressful. It's a lot for kids to manage, and I love the idea of having a block schedule where they have four classes. Now, whatever that looks like, I'm just a fan because I think it's easier to manage the work that you need to do for four hours. It's just less transitions throughout the day. It's, it just seems more, more sane, I don't know, somehow, to have fewer, fewer classes in a day. And anyway, I really am a fan. I think this is, this is a question, the class schedule is more than just the Pathways conversation. It really does allow our kids to have more electives. We've had this conversation where a lot of our music students can't take the, a number of electives. If they're taking a foreign language, boy, that's, that's it. You've got to figure out a way to take your gym class over the summer or something. And so that's stressful, you know, that, and so if we could change the schedule so that they would have time to do more of these, more options.
There's benefits for staff too. And again, those are things that we need some time to kind of talk through so that they have an opportunity to see what that might mean for them implication-wise. But think about English, for example, you know, one of the, one of the teaching techniques that we talk about all the time for good solid instruction is feedback, right? We know that feedback is one of the most important things for students as far as learning is concerned. When I think about our English teachers right now, they're teaching five sections of 30-plus kids. So if they give a summative assessment that happens to be writing, which of course I'm asking them to do writing, I don't, you know, not that there's anything wrong with multiple choice, but that shouldn't be the only form of summative assessment in an English class. Kids have to develop their literacy skills. So when you're asking kids to write and you're asking teachers to give feedback, that takes time. And if they, if they're doing that summative at the same time, that's 150 summative assessments that are coming in that they're trying to give substantive, meaningful feedback to kids on, that's very difficult to do. If you have four-by-four where you're teaching three sections of 30, that's a much more manageable way of being able to deliver instruction the way that we want it to get out to kids and the way we intended to get to kids.
Principal Bach, were you part of the throwing this into the fun, the bell time discussion that we had, the switch of the bell times? That was, was that one?
Two years ago.
Two years ago? And I'm, he's here, and I just, I'm wondering, I feel like we ended that without, without any conclusiveness, and it was, let's revisit this at some point. And I'm, I'm just curious to what regard we may want to consider, just looking at it again, if we are indeed in this process of, you know.
I thought of that last week, too. I was thinking, is this a good time for us to bring that up again if we're going to look at the schedule, change them both at the same time? But that might complicate things a lot more.
I don't, I don't know if that does or not. I honestly don't know.
And not necessarily for Principal Bach, where the, where the impact comes in is then how do you want to approach your transportation? Because as the bell time conversation was occurring, it was if we were to stick to the kind of the five-hour schedule of which our transportation runs, then are we moving the elementary-age kids earlier? What does that look like? Because we can do it without a financial impact or we can do it with a financial impact. And so, but, you know, everything, there's, where there's a give, there's a take.
Maybe it's too much.
I agree. I think it's a great, it seems like a logical time to think about it, but I think just in the experience that we had before, it's a super complex question, that one.
It was.
And I think this is already, as you've already expressed, it's going to be complicated enough. My question is, do you think it could be done for next, for, not for, obviously not for this coming year, but for '21?
This year, no. Emphatically, no.
Are you sure? Freak you out or anything? Could we get it ready and in place by January of next year? Would that give you enough time to work with your team and do all of the work that we need to do to get that in place for the 2021?
21, '22.
22 school year.
Tough question. You know, what I, what I'd say is that if that's a high priority for the board, we just need to continue to engage in conversation about that. And if it's a high priority for the board, then we start to begin to look at that. And I respect Director Burns' question earlier about, you know, could there be a recommendation? And so we can certainly start that process and then, you know, be in constant communication as to whether we're at a point where we can offer a clear, yes, we'd be able to look at doing something, or if we're just not there yet and are going to need more time to be able to do that. So I hesitate to commit to one thing or the other, but I, I do think that there would be a lot of interest in both students and staff at the high school in exploring this and talking about it.
Okay, thank you for that. I don't know, what would, what would it take, or did you have? I don't know, what would it take? Or did you have some?
Well, I just, on that point, we do have to keep in mind, I mean, a couple things about the change. Number one, it would be a massive change for the teaching schedule, and if we don't, if it's not going to be sustainable, because if we are going to move, we can see the number here, an annual cost, we want to be careful about making a change that we can't stick to, if the community, for whatever reason, does not support it. So we want to consider the pros and cons of trying to quickly go into it and ask for the community to continue to support it, or do we ask the community to support it? Because we think it's a great idea.
And ultimately, I think Director Burns just hit on the biggest question, potentially just for you as a board, figuring out strategically, how do you want to address that? My quick recommendation is kind of what's on the sheet, in that, to me, it makes the most sense, if you want to do a schedule change where you know there's going to be costs that are involved, it makes sense to wrap that up in a larger question with the levy. Again, I don't want to rule anything out or take anything off the table, which is why I say we can start the conversations, but ultimately, I think that's a question of, what's the best way to organize this and package what ultimately is going to go before the community?
Right. Because, I mean, you could argue, if you wait until the funding is there, and then people say, yep, this is what we want, and here's, we're going to support the funding, and then start it, well, that's just one more year of not having it in place. But maybe it's also kind of a good idea to say, well, let's take a chance on one year, put it in place, people see how amazing it is and what a difference it is, and they are more likely to support it then, because they know we don't have the long-term funding to be able to do it. So, two different ways to think about it, I think.
And to keep in mind, and maybe it's to keep a running tab, I'm not saying it's a positive or a deterrent, but you will have boundary changes that year as well. So in the land of we're changing things, think about if you want bell time, boundary, and schedule at the high school. I mean, maybe, and again, anything's doable, but back to how do we phase, how do we phase in changes?
Okay. Well, on that note, I need to be mindful of the time. It's 5:15, we have about 15 minutes left. Any final remarks or thoughts that you want to close on?
I'm good, unless you have further questions for me.
Thank you so much for coming today. This was incredibly helpful, and this is incredibly helpful, because I think a lot of us are still, you know, this is all still new for most of us. We're still learning. What does this actually mean? What does this look like? And man, this is exciting. And I want to keep talking about it. So I think we will probably keep talking about it. I think all of us want to keep hearing about how it's progressing.
Thank you for the opportunity to come.
Thank you. Thank you. So, getting back to our agenda for today, one of the things that we wanted to kind of touch on, and maybe, I think in my mind, I feel like we've already talked about this like four times, but just to maybe one more time, look at our board priorities. And just clarify, and I kind of just want to do this open-ended, if we were to take a look at the list, which is in the packet from today, the top 10 things, the top 10 things, which I believe goes to HH, or maybe top 11 things, I don't know. We can include expand the arts, but that's a sort of a natural cutoff. Are we comfortable with those top 10 things being our priorities? And if we're not, this is your chance to say, let's take this thing off or add this thing or something like that.
Can I comment on, so we had a little bit of discussion early on here this afternoon about intervention, and if you look at the top 10, there are some crossovers, right? There are some that kind of work with one another. We have, as we just talked about, the redesigned class period along with the comprehensive career tech pathway plan, expand electives. So the top 10, I think in a lot of ways, actually, maybe condensed down to a top few. And one that I wanted to talk about is to piggyback a little bit on interventions we were talking about. I feel like one of the most important considerations we can be thinking about, and it's here, it's, in my opinion, it's the second one, smaller class size, but then in the parenthetical teacher support. And I look at it as maybe the term classroom environment. What, if anything, can we do to improve our classroom environment? I wrote down, we've talked about intervention and interventionists, and I feel like if there's one word to describe how we can improve education, it's student engagement. Or engagement would be one word, two words would be student engagement. But, and I look at, and you probably have had similar experiences when you've been going to the schools, that one of the challenges that is bubbling up is being just omnipresent now for teachers, is the challenges that are present in the classroom. And whether it's behavioral intervention or support, or it's certain, you know, supports for reading and math, I would really like to see us consider, what is the most effective strategic way that we can improve the classroom environment? And I would like to consider, if we're talking about the costs involved with interventionists at the middle school, at the high school, I'd also like to put in there, so we can talk about it as a board. If we use the word interventionist, maybe I'd rather use them as, you know, engagement enhancement coordinator, just whatever, but I think it is having potentially additional resources for behavioral interventionists at the elementary school, at schools, as well as reading and, I think, math supports throughout our system. And we've talked about, at the early ages, some different strategies, potential for the early, the K through 2, for, you know, potentially some of these Orton-Gillingham-type strategies for early identification of dyslexic students. Do we, you know, are there some strategies we can put in place that aren't really expensive, but at the same time are effective? But it also, so we have supports, I also want to look at the cost for supports for acceleration in our elementary schools and on up. And so that would be, again, seeking to increase student engagement.
Yeah.
And that's at all portions of the spectrum. I'd like to consider the costs and the benefits of having a coordinator who is responsible for, across the district, for all of our gifted and talented services. That would include GATE, but it would include other possibilities, too. So, I really, I'm thinking of it as a holistic supports for improving student engagement across. I know that it costs money, but if we're, I don't know if there could be any better way to improve test scores, to improve our district than having ways to improve student engagement.
I appreciate that. I think there's a lot of kids actually that are checked out, that are really bright, that don't fit into the normal scope of what's going on, lose interest and become disengaged. I don't think we really utilize our gifted program like we should utilize it. Maybe that could be looked at a little bit, expand on that a little bit. I don't know what that looks like, but I actually like that idea.
Thank you. Anybody else have thoughts?
I couldn't agree more with everything actually you both said, and it was what I wanted to comment on as well. I mean, we've got the pathway plan, I think we're, it seems like we're on quite a wonderful path with that. And, you know, again, agree wholeheartedly with the GATE gifted and talented, but also the need to challenge our students within the classrooms that are not, you know, testing into GATE. I think that is a very large level of growth for us, and I think we could really move the needle with that. And then, and also, so that's that. But to the point, in classroom supports of teachers, all you need to do is go around the classrooms and see the wonderful work they do and the tremendous stress that they're under. So if we can find a way to deal with, excuse me, supports, I mean, that is something I would be, you know, whatever term you have for it, you know, behavior, in-class supports, behavioral interventionist, whatever it is, with the overall macro piece of just improving the classroom environment, as well as helping push the students academically, giving them the opportunity within the classroom, so.
I agree with those things, too. And just to piggyback on that, I think a little bit is making sure that we're hitting our high school students, too, with our GT services. And not only that, but I think for students, I think would help student engagement, for students that don't come into high school a couple of years ahead in math, but really want to grow in that, are there ways that we could offer? And we talked about this, could we offer a math class over semester instead of over the whole year, so that they could get into classes over the year instead of just one? So that students who really want to get there, but maybe in middle school weren't there, that they can, that they can get to where they want to be in their academics.
That's a great, honestly, high school, that's extending it into middle school and high school is, I couldn't agree more.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Mark, for saying all that. I would agree. I think, I like that word, classroom environment, you know, outstanding learning environments, I mean, that's all under that same umbrella of what does it feel like to be in the classroom, both if you're a student and if you're a teacher? And is there a level of stress that we can try to, you know, remove? That, and I actually think one of the things, and this isn't a secret, I've talked about this forever, I believe a big part of that is class sizes. And so all of those supports and all of that other, the acceleration, the rigor, you know, being creative, going deep dives and having more complexity, more options, more choices, more flexibility, all of that, I think, is really important for our kids at all levels. But also, I think just having fewer kids in a class at a time is important. And maybe, and again, you know, we all know that's probably one of the most expensive things we can look at, because it means more space in the buildings and more staff, more teachers. But maybe we can have a conversation about specific grades that we want to target, or specific subject areas, like Rob Bach was saying, you know, the English language where there's a lot of writing, well, that takes a lot of time to grade written assignments. If we have really enormous English classes, you know, is that something we want to look at? Would that be appropriate to say, well, for those classes, we're going to make them smaller? I don't know. But I think I'd just like to have that conversation. So I guess getting back to this list, it sounds to me like we're pretty much still comfortable with these top 10, and we're basically saying that some of them actually are, sort of, could be combined into sort of one thing. Is there anything in that top 10 that we should take off at this point? Because it'll take us down a path we don't have time or bandwidth to cover? Or are we comfortable just leaving it like it is? And then, this is the final time, we're going to look at this for a while.
Well, I guess then, if that is the case, you know, then we haven't had any, you know, like the equity work, we haven't had any discussions about that. So I guess if we are going to leave it like this, are we going to have any further discussions about, when are we going to have these discussions, you know?
I guess what I look at is this would guide maybe some of the further conversations that we have with administration in terms of what priorities they, when they put together the schedule of what we're going to look at. It could be a guide for future work sessions that we want to talk about, just like this one. If we want to have a conversation about equity work that's being done, we can do that. If we want to bring in experts who come in and share what, you know, some other information or resources, that we could do that. I mean, it could be almost anything, really.
Yeah. And if I understand you correctly, you're not saying, like, put it away and not look at it, but you're saying these top 10 would be our list.
We're on it today because I've heard, again, that we haven't finalized our priorities. And I think the more direction that we can give to administration in terms of what to focus on, the better. That's, I think, if that's correct, right?
So maybe, for your second one, because if you look at this, you've actually already started to address some of these things, below your top 10, the comprehensive reading support with the dyslexia strategies and the third-grade MCAs, you're having a conversation about early intervention, increasing career exploration and exposure, we're doing that at the middle school already. We can't forget, although I know that in the next two years past that levy, that will have an impact on how much administration can support some of these other things. So maybe that's for your next, you know, you want to dig in a little bit leap. What I'm trying to say is combine a few of these so that you feel like you have that pretty comprehensive top 10 list.
Okay.
So you don't have to do anything tonight. One thing I just want to mention before, because I know we're getting close, is we have this updated class size for you, because it's something that you've been talking about. And Kathy, do you have just a minute to comment on that, so that when you're looking at it, you have a few things to guide you through that sheet?
Okay. Thanks.
Only 60 seconds. What's that?
Only 60 seconds.
Speak that.
So, the information that you have, no stress here, the information that you have is what we have done as far as allocations for this upcoming school year based on projections. We have spent a ton of time looking at all of our allocations and trying to make sure that we are allocating upfront this year, so that we don't find ourselves, over the summer or late spring, having to add sections. So we have really looked into the buildings that were somewhat close and the past history of when we've had to add, and we've added those upfront this year. So potentially, it's the same places we would have added down the road, but we're there now. You will see, as you look down the, so the two tan lines, that's the adjusted class size based on those allocations that we've given. You will see that our class sizes are looking very good with these numbers, and we're very well within those range. There are just one or two areas where we have a, you know, we're kind of watching. We do anticipate there may be a section we have to come back and talk with you about for Brookview, depending on how that enrollment looks and what actually happens as we get going for the next school year. The other piece is, we have spent a lot of time doing this upfront, because it allowed us to make sure our specialists were appropriately staffed, and principals have done a ton of work to align schedules, make special schedules work, get teachers' preps. So I think our staffing, we're probably in a better place than we've been in many of the past years at this point, so.
Great.
Principals have worked very hard on it.
Awesome.
I will always throw the caveat in there, that the numbers, these are based off of essentially February numbers. The likelihood of big swings is not going to happen, but please realize, this isn't set in stone. They're going to be changing every single day. So the ranges typically are good, like Kathy said, and establish some staffing and working with building principals to make it work with the specialist schedule and everything. But again, this is a snapshot, and it will change up, honestly, till September.
How often are you guys looking at this and updating it for your own internal purposes?
So what I do is, at this time of year, we did our first round, if you will, of what it looks like, sent parent, you know, put people on waitlist, took applications. And I kind of pace every three to four weeks at this time of year. As we get closer to summer, the frequency starts moving quicker. Every time I'm updating, I'm providing it to Kathy, so she can be updating. Honestly, by midsummer, I'm going weekly. I'm literally pulling those numbers weekly to make sure, just because there's transition.
Would it be possible to kind of loop us in just a little bit, just so we can keep an eye on it, too, maybe once a month or something, or not more often than?
Yes. Yes. Just realize, we start slow, it's like going downhill. We start slowing by August, we're looking at this stuff weekly. We're looking at it really close, so.
We probably don't need it that often.
This is really fast. So Kathy, when you said that you may be looking at additional section in Brookview, I'm just looking at the gray area, would you also be maybe possibly looking for additional sections in Rutherford, too, since their numbers are a little higher?
Rutherford, the place where we are, the close is just the third grade. Otherwise, their numbers are pretty well within the ranges. So that would be the only, that would be the one that I said, we have a couple.
Okay.
It'd be Brookview and then that Rutherford section.
Okay. Thank you.
We're trying to be careful not to overallocate, but allocate what we think we're going to need, and that one is really iffy if we're going to need it, so we didn't want to just put it in now and then find out we're overstaffed.
Thank you.
We're very stingy with our staffing when we were at the beginning, so. Do you know when we set these ranges? Like when the, you know, I'm just going to say, some of them are high, I don't like some of these ranges, and I would love to decrease them if we could, but do you know when we allocated, you know, when this happened? How many years have we had these ranges?
11 years ago, or?
Was it 11?
It was a while ago.
It's been a long time. Yeah, I mean. And I can tell you, though, Jen, if you, so I think we provided you some information several, back in November, where we went in and actually did some modeling, and it's going to be even better at this point, because if you change those ranges, it's not going to have a huge impact, because we're already well within the range.
Okay.
If we were closer to the top, there'd be more of an impact, but you don't have a lot at the top.
But it might give you the opportunity to talk about secondary, because if your elementary is pretty good and down to the middle of that range, if you feel comfortable, then you might say, okay, let's, so when you talk about phasing and what do we do this year?
Right. And not only that, but we really should revisit what came out of the Morris Leatherman survey about the pockets, and just look, just consider that, as well as the secondary.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay. Well, we need to get on. Thank you very much for this great conversation. I really appreciate it. This is the stuff that we're here for. So we are adjourned.
I am. Let's go.
I know. That was good.